Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, and good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. We're going to start off with a briefing for you today from the city's resilience consulting team on the equity-driven flood resilience plan. For those of you who watched City Council Tuesday night, this presentation was originally given to City Council on Tuesday night, so we'll start off with that briefing.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. I am John Millsfall, and the project manager for this project with Arcatis for Portsmouth Data and Equity-Driven Flood Resilience Strategy. I'm joined by my colleague Travis Davis. We're going to provide just an overview of the project, a little bit of focus on the community engagement plan. We're in the very early stages of the project, so we're looking to give you an update and hear any feedback or questions you may have this afternoon. We appreciate this opportunity today. To first focus on the general overview of the project, I want to put this in the general, larger context of resilience, using kind of an image of a tree. The leaves provide some of the examples of what a future resilient Portsmouth may look like, comprising of affordable housing, diversified economy, infrastructure that's adapted to deal with both current and future climate-related shocks and stresses. And Rockefeller Foundation provides a good definition of resilience being capacity of individuals, communities, and systems to survive, adapt, and grow in the faces of stresses and shocks, and even transform when conditions require it. So we're looking to really reduce some of the challenges that the city may face, and also make sure that the city is able to withstand and bounce back quickly in the face of any challenging events. So while this broader, evolving vision of a resilient Portsmouth informs our process, our project is focusing on flooding. So we're at the planning level of work. So if you look at the bottom, there's some categories of kind of roots, and we're in the climate resilience planning side, and particularly flooding when we look at this. But all the other roots will come together and be, inform our process to make sure that we're aligned in our plan. So as I mentioned, this is a flood-focused project. It's actually a funded project through DCR's Community Flood Preparedness Fund grant. So 90% is provided by this fund, with 10% match from the city. Some of the key principles that inform this program and inform our project is that it acknowledges climate change and its consequences, and based decision-making on the best available, available science. And second, that it identifies and addresses socioeconomic inequities, and works to enhance equity through adaptation protection efforts. So that's, that's the basis. Those are the principles of this program. This is what's baked into our process for our project as well. So a little bit of, what does this strategy include? It's to be shaped by inclusive engagement with the community and key stakeholders. The plan will include a suite of recommendations for specific projects to improve the resilience of essential systems and services, protect vulnerable communities, and develop policy and governance tools necessary to implement the plan. The action plan will include near-term and long-term solutions, planning on our feet for no-regret measures, and also long-term, larger-scale efforts as part of adaptation over time. So it's intended to be a plan of where things may go, and also have incremental processes along the way, both planning, zoning, type of recommendations to facilitate that, and also identifying funding mechanisms to allow for that to be accomplished over time. So looking at those tasks, you'll see throughout the whole project has engagement of stakeholders in the community. We're pretty early on in our process. We're in the risk and vulnerability assessment after just kicking off the project earlier this year. So we're working on, working at things through flood data and modeling, as well as having that discussion with the, the community very early on to inform our process. So that will lead into looking at some solutions, an action plan, and final reporting, both through an online story map for engagement with the community, and also report with action items. So I want to focus just for a second on some of the community engagement of what we've done to date, also kind of the picture of flooding, and then where we're headed in terms of engagement. So we look at this in terms of waves with the community, allowing our process to both report out, share initial goals and findings with the community, and allow the community to have feedback back to us and inform our process moving forward. So we have five waves of engagement. The first wave, we aim to hear generally what priorities are and what resilience looks like from the community, to inform the risk assessment and toolkit development for the project. In wave two, we will be seeking to better understand what's important and why for the city. That's clarifying places and services. In wave three, we'll be seeking feedback on the how. How do we protect, mitigate, and adapt? In wave four, we will be determining, how do we implement these changes? How do we make the solutions identified in the previous wave actionable? And the fifth and final wave, we'll be looking to decide how next steps will be worked out. Who's going to be doing what? Who's responsible, and the details around it? This will set up success for implementation. So a little bit, we, again, we're in the very beginning stage of all this. We've had an initial wave that's leveraged some existing activities out in the community to get the word out, get some initial feedback. We want to share some of that. So we participated in National Night Out, Sunset Thursday. We've stood up a website and some social media posts to get some of the word out, had a questionnaire out, also conversations. National Night Out probably had over 400 conversations with people and, and families. And what we have listed there is just what we've heard. We, we see that this has not actually encompassed the whole Portsmouth community, but it's what we've been hearing. We've heard some areas that are known to have flooding that are desired to be protected. We see some priorities in terms of looking to incorporate green infrastructure in the future, that there's heart seen in terms of downtown, and that homes are a priority for community residents. They're concerned about the level of protection that their homes may have, and also the inconvenience of leaving their home, getting to their workplace, and being able to come home safely. We've also heard that in terms of sea level rise and climate change, that we heard some folks really nerve-wracked about it. They're, they're not sure what they can do about it, how to be best informed about the risks, and also when it comes to protecting their financial assets, not sure how to even get insurance for it, or how, find it difficult to navigate that process. Further reporting out, here's some word clouds of some of the things we've heard, you know, in terms of also understanding their risks. They also see a need for current drainage improvements for the infrastructure there, as well as increasing them and looking at sea level rise and increased rainfall in the future. Also see emphasis in some communities, such as downtown or old town, but we've seen that this is not necessarily representative of all of Portsmouth. So we're looking to see how we continue to get the word out. We've been looking to engage civic leagues, church groups, also the website. That's also why we want to have these presentations, to get that word out to other groups. So we do have a website. We've also had some social media posts. This has been to make sure in the early stages that there's as much awareness in the community of this project going on, and that there can be that dialogue from the beginning throughout of concerns, and also as we start to see options that the community can inform on those solutions, and have the right stakeholders at the table throughout the community. This will be the way that we primarily keep everyone informed. As a starting point, the website will be updated. We'll also have a story map as we start to have more solutions and identified action forward, in a way that they can stay involved as well, to give feedback, a two-way So in, in parallel to our engagement in terms of our risk assessment, we are looking at flooding. We're looking at both, well, storm surge, where, you know, nor'easters or hurricanes push water inland from the coast. We're also looking at high-tide flooding, where just those higher situations allow for drainage to not occur, and that there's ponding at basins and, or low spots in the community. And we're also looking at rainfall-driven flooding. Those areas that are maybe inland and not even necessarily impacted by coastal scenarios, but they, they have flooding issues just from precipitation events. We're looking at how climate change may impact these rising sea levels, and also higher rainfall and more frequent rainfall events, and how this may affect the risk for the community. This is just one snapshot. It does not reflect all of the scenarios that are being worked out, but you can see on the left, a wide gambit of time horizons, return periods, and data that we're pulling on, just all from just the coastal, the high tide, and the rainfall. And so this will allow us to hear from the community, start to validate, and from the science and modeling side, start to see where there may be flooding, both today, and then also looking into the future, and start to see where that risk profile So turning towards our next engagement waves, as I mentioned, we have five engagement waves. We're just starting to plan for our second wave here, building on some of the early opportunities we were able to take advantage of, of events already in the community. We'll be looking to get feedback of some of the initial results of the flood risks, get feedback from the community. Does it reflect what people have seen? Are there areas that are not being picked up? And continue to establish a good dialogue through these platforms. Through this process, we also want to incorporate and prioritize parts of Portsmouth that are important to the community, different infrastructure, or buildings, or facilities, or services that identify the community that we make sure are prioritized in the plan. So as mentioned, there is a, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a slide there. In this next phase, we'll be giving some of that initial feedback for the community to weigh in on, and continue to build those relationships through developed and new connections. So as mentioned, there is a project website. Encourage you all to track along. Through the website, there is a questionnaire that will continue to update. We have the first questionnaire up there. As we move along, we'll have other questionnaires to continue to have feedback, but sort of the landing page is where the updates will be had. We'll be also looking to get into the community through civic leagues, community open meetings, et cetera, to also have those engagement waves informed in our process. So I appreciate your time. I'd love to open it up to any questions or comments.
Commissioners, do you all have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. So at this point, how has your engagement been with the Navy so far?
Yeah, that's, we're building on the JLU study. So we are working, that study was done, I think, 2019. And so that looked at a lot of the intersections and relationship between the military facilities and the community. So that's, that's our starting point of information. I know there, there were some projects identified there and some risks, and we'll continue to work through with the steering committee on our project to build on those efforts and continue engagement throughout our project.
Any additional questions?
Madam Chair. So your steering committee, is that primarily staff? Is that made up of potentially maybe large maritime employers? Is there any, you know, representation amongst that steering committee for both public and private?
So our, our, our initial stand-up of the steering committee is department heads and city staff. In future waves, we'll be looking to maybe broaden that, or have smaller groups that are focused on certain areas or challenges together that are focused, depending on kind of where the project leads.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Okay, thank you. We will move to our first of your public hearing items for today. We have a rezoning and a use permit, Z 2205, UP 22-15, and Amy Murvine will give the staff a report on those applications.
Good afternoon.
This is Amy Murvine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This rezoning application is being considered concurrently with a use permit application to remove the proffers and develop a multifamily dwelling. My presentation will focus on both applications. Consideration of the use permit is contingent upon a recommendation of approval on the rezoning request. Each application will require a separate vote. The rezoning and use permit applications before you today involve a 3.73-acre parcel at 3993 Twin Pines Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property from Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential (URMK) to Multifamily Urban Residential (URM) in order to remove the existing proffered conditions. A multifamily dwelling development requires a use permit in the URM zoning district. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting a use permit for the proposed use. The site is vacant with dense vegetation located primarily in the rear area of the parcel. A wetland delineation, which was confirmed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, indicated that approximately 0.21 acres of non-title wetlands are present in the rear of the property. The applicant indicates that minimal to no wetland impacts are anticipated for the proposal. The surrounding area is a mix of commercial and residential uses. To the east of the subject property is vacant land with dense vegetation, zoned conditional, general, mixed use. Residential townhouse dwellings, zoned URMK, are located across Twin Pines Roads to the north. And a 72-unit multifamily apartment complex adjoins the subject property to the south, which is zoned URMK. A commercial shopping strip center is located to the west, zoned The property is currently subject to the proffered conditions of zoning amendment ordinance Z-05-14 that were adopted by City Council on January 10th, 2006. The proffered conditions limit the total number of dwelling units to 36 units, within not more than six buildings, and require that the property be developed in substantial conformity with the City Council-approved Twin Pines condominiums conceptual layout plan and the architectural renderings. The current applicant seeks to rezone the property from URMK to URM, removing the proffered conditions in order to develop a multifamily dwelling development with a total of 82 units. The applicant is proposing a four-story, 82-unit, multifamily dwelling development with age restrictions, allowing only tenants 55 years or older. The maximum density in URM is 25 units per acre, dwelling units per acre. Based on the site acreage of 3.73 acres and the proposed 82 units, the requested density meets the zoning requirement. The proposed building is L-shaped, and the exterior is composed of brick and vinyl siding. Each unit will include a balcony, and at least one elevator is proposed. Storm water management will be provided at the rear of the property. The conceptual layout plan displays 123 off-street parking spaces, including five ADA accessible parking spaces, with pedestrian access located around the building perimeter. Two vehicular access points are proposed from Twin Pines Road. Exterior site lighting is proposed throughout the parking lot, and waste receptacles will be provided along the walkway around the building. Long-term and short-term bicycle parking will be provided in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance, and will be indicated on the site plan submission. The project narrative indicates that at least 10% open space set aside will be provided, and will include concrete walks, park benches, shade trees, and other landscaping to enhance the area. The next following slides show the architectural renderings of each elevation. The proposed materials consist of brick and vinyl siding. This elevation shows the front facade facing Twin Pines Road to the north, and the left elevation facing the commercial shopping strip to the west. The rear elevation faces the multifamily apartment complex to the south, and the right elevation faces the vacant lot to the east. Rezoning the property from URMK to the URM zoning district will relinquish the property of the associated conditional development plan, and allow the property to be developed without the existing development encumbrances. The use permit request for a multifamily dwelling development would provide for the use of vacant property in a manner that is appropriate for the property and compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of both the rezoning and use permit request with the recommended conditions. Two additional conditions were added to the staff report and submitted to the applicant and Planning Commission on Monday, October 31st. The two additional proposed conditions include a multifamily dwelling with not more than 82 units of housing, and shall be operated and as, and qualify as housing for persons 55 or older. To my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding these applications. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Murvine?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I will have probably a handful of questions for the developer. Will they actually be here today?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll reserve my questions for them.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Murvine.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, if I could add one thing for that, that application right there. You have both the rezoning and the use permit. So if we could get the, Ms. Jackson, to read both of those when you open your public hearing. You can conduct a single public hearing on both items. You'll just have to have separate motions and votes on each, but you can do that through a single public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next, our next item, Z 2206, and UP 2216, and Julie Chop is going to present that.
Hi, everyone. This is Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. Staff is recommending Planning Commission grant a 30-day deferral on both the rezoning application, Z 2206, as well as the use permit application, UP 2216. The applicant has been in discussions with the Economic Development Authority to purchase 2410, 2414, and 2416 Turnpike Road. So this is the, the parcel, or the, the area that he's looking to develop a shipping container storage yard. And the, in the blue circled are the three parcels that he has been in discussion with the city to purchase. So he has been in discussions, okay. So at the October 25th City Council public hearing, City Council did authorize the conveyance of these parcels to the Economic Development Authority. Deferring these applications allows the applicant to purchase 2410, 2414, and 2416 Turnpike Road from the EDA, and incorporate the parcels into the proposed rezoning and use permit applications. If the deferral is granted, the applications are scheduled to be heard at the December 6th Planning Commission public hearing. The applications will remain on the same track as they would if they were heard at today's Planning Commission meeting, with the applications scheduled to be heard at the December 13th City Council public hearing. So the deferral will not delay the applicant at all. And to my knowledge, no public comments have been received regarding these applications, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, thank you.
If I could add one more comment on that one. Since we will be re-advertising the changes made with the acquisition of those three parcels, you do not need to open the public hearing today. You can just defer both items to your December meeting. And so we have our, our last work session presentation, which is a discussion on authorizing staff to work on some zoning ordinance, and Julie Chop will also present that.
All right. So you all have, should have received a resolution for the proposed authorization of staff to evaluate and determine if code amendments are necessary.
Thank you.
As you all are aware, the city's zoning ordinance was comprehensively revised, and the new zoning ordinance was adopted by City, City Council in December of 2020, and became effective February 1st, 2021. City Council approved amendments to the zoning ordinance in June and October of 2021. As with any zoning ordinance, it is anticipated that minor amendments will be necessary to address matters in order to adjust to the needs of the community, to maintain good zoning practice, and to address legislation recently passed by the Virginia General Assembly. Staff has identified several additional minor provisions of the zoning ordinance that require evaluation and consideration of modifications to improve the city's zoning ordinance. The modifications required due to new legislation passed by the General Assembly include revisions to the tree canopy coverage requirements, as well as extensions of use permits, special exceptions, and the certificate of appropriateness approvals, in the case of an extension granted by the General Assembly. Staff has also identified several revisions to the downtown D1 sub-district standards addressing open space set-asides, accessory structures, site landscaping, fences and walls, maximum total sign area, and density requirements. Proposed additions to the use-specific standards for multifamily dwellings to address security measures are also proposed, as well as modifying the bicycle space requirements for multifamily dwellings. Another proposed revision provides clarification to the process for permitting family day homes. Staff is also proposing to expand the allowance of two-family dwellings in several zoning districts. These are just a few examples of the proposed code amendments to the zoning ordinance. Staff is requesting Planning Commission authorize staff to prepare these code amendments, as well as any additional issues that staff determines to reasonably require the consideration of an amendment in order to address those issues. We plan to bring the amendments back to Planning Commission for a future work session discussion, as well as to go through the public hearing process. Thank you for your consideration, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Chop?
I just have a brief clarification question. The D1 went through a fairly significant change recently. Am I correct in saying so?
I believe you, you might be referring to the D2, the uptown.
Okay.
So...
So this will, this will be an update for D1 as well?
Yeah, the downtown area, not the uptowns.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chop.
Thank you.
I'll just again make one more comment on that, just for really the public and for Planning Commission's knowledge that, you know, the staff, as, some people think we have the ability to just, you know, change zoning ordinance, make changes on our own, but it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. We need authorization from either the Planning Commission or City Council to initiate zoning ordinance amendments. So we just want to make that clear. Most of the time, I'd say 99% of the time, we come through the Planning Commission for authorization, unless it's something the City Council themselves have identified they want adjusted. So I just want to make it clear, we don't unilaterally just make zoning ordinance change proposals. And as Julie indicated, these will go through full public hearing process once the amendments are done. And that's all we have. Oh, we have one last item. I think you have on your agenda, Williamson Road Street closure that Planning Commission originally deferred, I think, back in July, and was deferred. Again, we're going to request an additional 60-day deferral, continuing to work with the property owners on, on working out a solution to that, that hopefully will ultimately not involve closing the street, but that has not been concluded yet. So we would like to request an additional 60-day deferral on that item.
So I'm thinking January...
Till January, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, if there are no additional questions, I believe this concludes our work session. So our work session is now adjourned, and we begin our regular meeting at 1:30. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, being held in the City Council chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Thaxton...
Present.
Commissioner Coleman...
Here.
Commissioner Page...
Present.
Commissioner Barnes...
Here.
Commissioner Curry...
Present.
Commissioner Hines...
Present.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the October 4th, 2022 public hearing. If there aren't any change... If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, I will now call the roll. Please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton.
Present.
Commissioner.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their December 13, 2022 Public Hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. This item was deferred from our September 6, 2022 Meeting, S-22-01 Mary Mack Point. Raleigh C. Crey, Attorney at Law on behalf of Jeffrey and Colleen Stenick, requests the closure of the grassy dead-end portion of Williamson Road to the evenly divided and maintained by the adjoining property owners. The closure area is adjacent to the applicant's home at 96 Williamson Road and abuts 100 Monitor Road. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for single-family residential, low to medium density. The property is right-of-way owned by the City of Portsmouth. The staff coordinator is Carl Jackson. Planning staff recommends a 60-day deferral. We need a motion to defer this item for 60 days to the January 13, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I make a motion to defer S-2201 for 60 days till the January 22 meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a first and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
Commissioner Hines.
Yes.
This item is deferred to the January 13, 2023 Meeting by a vote of six to zero. Our first public hearing item is a use permit and a rezoning. Z-22-05 Town Point Plaza. John Sandow, P.E., on behalf of the Flats at Twin Pines LLC, requests to rezone approximately 3.73 acres at 3993 Twin Pines Road from Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential URMK to Multifamily Urban Residential URM in order to remove the existing proffers and develop an 82-unit multifamily dwelling development. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for a multifamily dwelling, UP-22-15. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for multifamily residential. The property is owned by the Flats at Twin Pines LLC and is further described as tax map 846, Parcel 2.8. And the use permit is UP-22-15 Town Point Plaza. John Sandow, P.E., on behalf of the Flats at Twin Pines LLC, requests a use permit for a four-story, 82-unit senior living multifamily dwelling on the approximately 3.73-acre property at 3993 Twin Pines Road with a proposed density of 22 dwelling units per acre. The property is currently zoned Conditional Multifamily Urban Residential, URMK. The applicant is concurrently requesting the rezoning of the property to remove the existing proffers, Z-22-05. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for the multifamily residential. The property is owned by the Flats at Twin Pines LLC and is further described as tax map 846, Parcel 2.8. The staff coordinator is Amy Mervine. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your applications at this time?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon. Afternoon.
My name is John Sandow. I'm presenting these two applications. As noted, the, I'm going to go a little out of order here. These, the original approval was for multiple buildings several years ago and for a different unit count. And so those conditions were not conducive to the proposed development of the ones, the single structure that's more located towards the front, leaving the wetlands in the back undisturbed, which is what our proposed plan indicates, with a kind of a central hardscape and greenscape area around the building and in larger groups, more in the inside of the L shape. We are proposing to use a, two entrances for ingress egress. One, as coordinated with staff, has been aligned with the existing road across the street. The parking is as required by code, and the circulation is completely circles the entire building. The stormwater management is outside the wetlands in the rear, and the discharge from the pond is to be routed into the existing conveyances. It currently appears that it's to the north in this planned view, through the subdivision and stormwater pipes that have been provided and reviewed with engineering and public works staff. The building construction is a type of vinyl siding and brick. It's a mix of those two products. There will be hardscape, as shown in this rendering around the facility to give pedestrian access around the green areas. And each of the units is proposed to have a small balcony. Here are the building elevations from the front view from Twin Pines Road. You see the front door in the middle there? And then from the sides on this sheet and then on the next. The notices have been posted as noted. And I'm a, as noted also, 82 units is currently what we are proposing in the floor plans in a four-story structure.
Thank you, Mr. Sandow. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hines, I mean, Curry, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question concerning, how many elevators would be in this particular?
Two elevators, right, Wendell? Elevators, number of elevators? Two elevators, sir.
And you only have five disabled parking?
Yes, sir. That's in compliance with it. We could entertain during review if it needs to be, if the, because it is a 55 and older community, there may be some desire, but to have more. But we also have, there's one major egress-ingress out front, but there are several ingress-egresses around the building. And we also have parking in multiple places. We can actually either sign them or not sign them and have ramps in more locations if that's something that during planner view seems to be necessary, given the 55 and older use.
So when you're doing the 55 and older, are you doing at this market rent or at this income base?
This is market.
So if you're not able to get 100% capacity, will you still use it for 55 and plus? Or will you open it up to other ages?
No, the intention is 55 and older.
That's correct.
Hands down, yes. That's a condition, I believe, in the staff recommendations.
Okay.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Hines?
Yes, thank you. So you did answer my question about the elevator. So I guess the question now would kind of go to staff. Would that be something that we would write or could write in as a condition? As everything we've received has said at least one elevator. A second elevator, I think, for this use is not only appropriate, but I think should be almost required because of the, you know, the age of the applicant or the people that we live in here. Is that something we can do to, you know, put it in as approval?
Yes, you can add that as one of your conditions of approval. Needs to be made as part of the motion.
Okay. The question I also have with this development, is this, any HUD financing involved in this at all?
No HUD financing.
Okay. No intention at any point or phase in this that there will be HUD financing?
No, it's not been discussed, explored, or at any, at this point.
And that would be reported back to staff? Should that change?
Yes, sir.
My question also about the parking spaces has been satisfied, but I think that additional ramping would be important for this project as well. And I think that's something that we should write into our conditions to allow staff to meet our intent with that, if that's okay. But I think we certainly need to make sure the use aligns with the user in this. Also, the elevator's size, there is one concern I have about that with the age of the residents. There may be need for medical situations that may come up. I think there probably need to be an elevator that is appropriate in size for, you know, should there be need for medical transport, structural access, et cetera.
My name is Wendell Green of WTG Design Architects, Chesapeake, Virginia.
Would you step over to the mic, please? Thank you.
Okay. Should I start over again?
Please, thank you.
My name is Wendell Green of WTG Design Architects, 860 Greenbrier Circle, Chesapeake. Our intent is definitely to have two elevators, not only because of the possible emergency of someone having to be moved from their floor down. That's paramount in code requirements. But also, we want two, because if people are moving in and out, we want to make sure that they will always have one elevator that they can automatically have. So most of the time, they'll have two, but at times, probably they'll need one for move-in and move-out situations.
Also, in the case of mechanical failure, one goes down, you know, you've got four floors.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if we necessarily want our seniors, you know, climbing four floors to get to their space.
That too.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioners, are there any further questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, hello, you spoke on market price for the apartments. Would that typically be for market price?
We're definitely investigating that with the owner. But on an average, for a one-bedroom situation, we'll probably look at a market. And I'm going to range it because of the size of the square footages of each unit. Probably 1,200 to 1,500 for one-bedroom. Two-bedroom will probably run about 1,800 on a ballpark. That's what we're looking at right now. And what they've done is market value and a pro forma and dealing with the bank. And it had to really work in regards to how much it would cost to build it and to maintain it and whatever residual that the developer would be getting from it. That's kind of ballpark.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
You said it has amenities as far as the complex. What would that be?
Oh, yeah. We will have, I'm smiling because obviously we're going to have on the first floor an exercise area, but we're going to have a computer lab for the seniors. I'm smiling because whenever I get in trouble, I get my 26-year-old daughter to get me out of trouble. So the seniors normally have problems with dealing with the Wi-Fi and so forth, which, incidentally, each unit will be have that capacity of having their own Wi-Fi capacity. But in doing that, we will have what we call lab workshops. I'm working on a unit now in Norfolk. It's an existing that we did major renovation, and it's 150 units. And that's why I'm smiling, because I made sure I put a lab in this one, because the one they have in Portsmouth, I mean, in Norfolk, really is used a lot. So that's one other. Then they'll have an assembly room. This assembly room can be used probably by the neighborhood. If they want to have special events or something like that, they could contact management and work certain things out, anything from social events or whatever. So it will have a common area. So it's an exercise area, a lab for the seniors, and then a common area for different kinds of activities.
Commissioners, are there any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mr. Sandow. Commissioners, I need a, hm? Go. Go.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-22-05 and UP-22-15. I do have one registered speaker. As I call your name, come forward, and you have up to five minutes to speak. Donna Sai.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Sai, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood, which is in Churchland. And I'm doing research on how our land is being used by developers who are taking away the ability of people to have land and trees around them. They want to put complexes there. The other thing is this, did they ask the Civic League, did they meet with the Civic Leagues in Churchland? Churchland Civic League and Ebony Heights Civic League to get their ideas and opinions before they started thinking about adult living apartments? The other thing Portsmouth is having problems with is water and sewage system, taking care of that. All right. The other thing is I'm seeing a lot of, we're a historical city, and I'm seeing a lot of vinyl siding on buildings now because it's cheaper. We live near Williamsburg, which is historical, and their buildings look historical. And now I'm seeing that folks are forgetting about our history and putting things on land that could be used for agriculture. We need to start thinking about self-sufficiency instead of placing urban housing. Family, we need family units with houses on a certain amount of land. We're getting away from individual liberty. We're getting on to the collective thing where they're deciding what they're going to do for us. So I'm very concerned about this rendering without any conversation with the folks that are going to be living near there. And I live in Churchland, so I've already seen a complex being put up. I don't know the name of the road. I think. I think, I don't know the name. But I have to look at that, and I don't see anything for the people to really enjoy the outdoor. It's like you're stuck in the house, and that's it. So I don't approve of this, but y'all gonna do what you want to do.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-22-05 and UP-22-15. I have no other registered speakers. If there is someone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, this item is closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, we are in need of a motion and a second for Z-22-05.
Madam Chair, may I ask just one question?
Sure.
Also, our speaker did mention a concern about some of our infrastructure in terms of resiliency, flooding, things of that nature, about how we're gonna handle rainwater and things of that nature. Can staff maybe just do a highlight, you know, presentation of how we would handle, how this project would handle that in terms of, I believe he said something about they would use existing infrastructure to move water off the site. Am I understanding that correctly?
So what the applicant had indicated is they're gonna have a stormwater management facility in the back of their property, that big sort of oval area in the back, just short of the wetlands. And they're required by state law and by city code to comply and keep and treat all the stormwater on-site. What he indicated is that once it's treated, it will be conveyed not into the wetlands or onto any adjacent property, but it will be conveyed into the existing city storm drain system, which in Churchland is a much newer system, you know, it's a much newer area than the rest of the city. So that's what he was indicating. That stormwater pond in the back, they're required by city code, by state law, to maintain all the stormwater on-site, and then they're allowed to discharge into the city's conveyance, the stormwater pipes. That's what they were indicating, what they'll be required to do. And all of that will be addressed during the site plan process.
And like you said, the infrastructure is significantly newer than some of the challenges that we're currently facing in other parts of the city. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Thank you for providing that clarification.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any further discussion? Commissioner Page?
Yeah, as a member of the Churchland community and the Civic League, I'm gonna have to abstain from this particular item, or both items.
Thank you.
I could have Mr. Miller address the question of abstaining on this item.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Page, appreciate the disclosure, and it's good to disclose interests like that. Under the city code, applicable to council, planning commission, other bodies, an abstention is only appropriate if there's a clear financial conflict. So you are okay to vote on this matter.
So including my property value going up?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion for Z-22-05.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-22-05.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-22-05. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a, pardon me? He would have had to.
Yeah.
We're ready? Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item, Z-22-05, is approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, UP-22-15, we're in need of a motion.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion for UP-22-15, Town Point Plaza.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve UP-22-15 with the staff conditions presented in the staff report, in addition to ensuring, adding additional condition of the two elevators, as I detailed in our conversation, and working with staff to address the issue of parking spaces for the handicap and/or additional ramping for the handicap residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Hines. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Page. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We have a motion and a second with conditions that are already included in the staff report in adding two elevators and also addressing handicap parking spaces. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is approved five to one with the conditions stated beforehand. Okay. Let's go to the next. Our next item, Z-22-06, Turnpike Road. Bobby Wilson of LBC Transportation LLC requests to rezone approximately 0.95 combined acres at 2325 and 2332 and 2400 Turnpike Road, as well as 2410 and 2434 Spruce Street from Light Industrial IL to Industrial IN to allow for a minor subdivision to combine the properties with surrounding properties. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for a shipping container chassis storage yard, UP-22-16. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates these properties as part of a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by LBC Transportation LLC and are further described as Tax Map 175, parcels 13, 14, 15, and 3, as well as Tax Map 183, parcel 13. In addition, we have UP-22-16, Turnpike Road. Bobby Wilson of LBC Transportation LLC requests a use permit for a shipping container chassis storage yard on approximately 2.46 combined acres located at 2325, 2332, 2400, 2404, 2418, and 2421 Turnpike Road, as well as 2410, 2420, 2422, 2426, 2424, and 2434 Spruce Street. The properties are concurrently zoned Light Industrial IL and Industrial IN. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning of the properties that are zoned IL to IN in order to combine all of the parcels through a minor subdivision, Z-22-06. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as part of a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by LBC Transportation LLC, as well as Stephen C. Williams and Alexa Smith, and are further described as Tax Map 175, parcels 13, 14, 15, 17, 22, 18, and 3, as well as Tax Map 183, parcels 17, 13, 14, 15, and 16. The staff coordinator was Julie Chop. Staff recommends a 30-day deferral of this use permit request at their October the 25th meeting. City Council authorized the conveyance of 2410, 2414, and 2416 Turnpike Road to the Economic Development Authority, which allows the applicant to purchase and incorporate the parcels into the proposed rezoning, Z-22-06, and use permit, UP-22-16 applications. Following the commission's public hearing, the application is scheduled to be heard at the December the 13th City Council public hearing, so that the deferral will not alter the total timeframe for the processing of the application. And I failed to read the caption for the deferral for the rezoning, which staff recommends a 30-day deferral of this rezoning request at their October the 25th meeting. City Council authorized the conveyance of 2410, 2414, and 2416 Turnpike Road to the Economic Development Authority, which allows the applicant to purchase and incorporate the parcels into the proposed rezoning, Z-22-16, and use permit applications being heard at the December the 6th Planning Commission public hearing. The application is scheduled to be heard at the December the 13th City Council public hearing, so that the deferral will not alter the total timeframe for the processing of the application. There will not be a public hearing on this item, and Chair, we are in need of a motion to defer.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion to defer UP-22-16 to December the 6th, 2022.
I'd like to make a motion to defer UP-22-16 for 30 days to the December 6th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
I'm gonna go back to the other one.
Commissioners, we will now be voting. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
Z-22-06 is approved by a vote of six to zero.
I said 15.
Did you do?
Yeah, I did it backwards.
Okay. I stand corrected. UP-22-16 by a vote of six to zero. Okay, now we need a motion for the Z-22-06.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The commissioner is in need of a motion to defer item Z-22-06 to December 6th, 2022.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that Z-22-06 be deferred 30 days to the December 6th meeting, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer for 30 days, Z-22-06. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is deferred by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Under new business, the chair is in need of a motion or a resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to be prepared by staff.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I will read the resolution, and then we will vote. Whereas, from time to time, the public necessity, conveyance, general welfare, and good zoning practice warrant the evaluation and consideration and modifications to the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance. And whereas, the zoning ordinance should be maintained as a living document adjusted to the needs of the community as determined appropriate by the Planning Commission and City Council. And whereas, staff has identified various provisions of the zoning ordinance that it believes could be improved by amendment. And whereas, the Planning Commission deems it appropriate for staff to prepare proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for consideration by Planning Commission and City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Planning Commission and the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, that staff is instructed to prepare draft amendments to the zoning ordinance with an emphasis on, but not limited to, addressing the following issues. Modifications required due to new legislation passed by the Virginia General Assembly to include revisions to the tree canopy coverage requirements, as well as extensions of use permit, special exception, and certificate of appropriateness, approval in the case of an extension granted by the Virginia General Assembly. Number two, revisions to the open space set-aside accessory structure, site landscaping, fences and walls, maximum total sign area, density requirements for converting existing structures for development and redevelopment in the downtown D2 sub-districts. Number three, expansion of the allowance of two-family dwellings in the GR, UR, GMU, MUH, HR, and HLO zoning districts. Number four, removal of the principal interest requirement in the commercial use-specific standards. Number five, addition of the use-specific standards in regards to security measures for multifamily dwellings. And number six, clarification of process for permitting family day homes. We need a motion. Number seven, addressing any additional issues that staff determines to reasonably require the consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance by the Planning Commission or City Council, adopted by the Planning Commission of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, at a meeting held on November the 1st, 2022. We need a motion.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe under number two, you said D2. It should read D1.
Okay.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to be prepared by the state.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This resolution is approved by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe that that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business? Mr. Baldwin?
Uh, no, there's nothing else from staff.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.